Seven visitors in the year twenty twenty four. That is an incredible number of contacts with people passing through our town. And we all know the economic benefits that come from that, especially when they are able to convince them to hang around town for a while, visit Main Street, stay in a hotel, etc. And then a few other items. On May eighth, I and also Mayor Atro attended the Glorid Creek Open House. I must confess, I find it quite exciting to see all the potential mining projects that might be happening in our part of B C. And in my mind, they will probably be a major economic driver in the years to come. I also met with a couple in town who had questions about Boulevard Gardens. On May twenty first, I attended the library board meeting for Counselor Elliott, who was on holidays. On May twenty second, I and four other counselors attended the E O C training. Personally, I found the E O C training really, really interesting. And I think the thing I came away from it was, I think the thing I came away from it was you can do emergencies well, or you can do them very poorly. And I think we received lots of really helpful suggestions on how to handle emergencies well. And I I kind of came away from the meeting feeling like I think our town is set up really well for handling emergencies. Like Mr. Herzog is just a great person to be in charge of that particular file. And then lastly, I wanted to just say I'm rather excited to be attending F C M later this week with Mayor Atro. And this year it's being held in Ottawa, and I'm very thankful to have that opportunity. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor Atro.
Thanks, Councilor Buchanan. Questions, Council Ray?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the the Visitor Center Annual Operating Report was interesting. And it'll give us good context. I was just wondering through the staff if staff could provide us with the contract that is signed between the two parties sometime before our meeting. Because that was a question that kept coming up in my mind is are they going over and above the contract? Or are we demanding all these things? So it would be interesting to know before we go into the into the meeting.
Thanks, Council Ray. Okay, thanks, Council Buchanan. Council Elliott is away. I think that's, is that where I'm at? Um, Council Leonard has regrets. Council Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. So I went to the Northern Health Healthy Communities Forum in Prince Rupert. There are handouts that I brought back for my fellow council on the back table. I was extremely impressed with the amount of information and projects and initiatives that they have on the go. In particular, supports for those who are struggling with addiction and also supports for seniors. They are one of the first that I have seen to also have a workshop component into their conference. I've been to a number of conferences over the last year, and I was thoroughly impressed with the opportunity they provided for us to do so. So, for example, the group that I was with, our topic was complex care. And we all sort of talked a little bit about how we might be able to advance that specifically for the North Area. I included some of the pictures and examples of where you can find more information specific to the population and public health team who led that workshop. And then I thought it was really interesting on the next page, the two of three in my report are seventy of two thirty three. Just the amount of hiring and staffing that they have been focused on. It was really apparent that staff matter to them, and then they have really focused on how they can support existing staff. So around recruitment and retention. And it was really interesting to hear from other municipal leaders talk about the importance of integration of Northern Health professionals into the community. And how much they've really rallied around them to say, what does that look like? And I was surprised to learn that when engaging with Northern Health staff, that's one of the number one pieces of feedback that they suggest contributes to their wanting to stay within the community's feeling that they are welcomed. So it could be little things like taking them out for bike rides or to a local restaurant or to the ski hill, things like that. And then I just provided a little bit of information on what they define as public health. I'll also share this with our Community Safety Wellbeing Committee because it was interesting that they had this specific slide on what they sort of determined to be upstream thinking and how they really focus all of their efforts on that approach. I didn't realize that in twenty twenty four, they recently just submitted their British Columbia Population Public Health Framework in strengthening public health. There's a ton of information in there. Again, I'll refer that to the Community Safety Wellbeing folks, including Northern Health, who sits on that group, just to expand a little bit on that. And then the remainder of the North Central Local Government Annual General Meeting. Sorry, I realized I made a mistake there. I said Leadership Academy, but the Annual General Meeting went really, really well. There was just a little bit of feedback that came on the strategic plan from just a couple members. And that was just their desire to do more strategic planning. Congratulations to Mayor Atro, who is the new president. And it was really interesting to hear from the U B C M president on this macroeconomic impacts of the U S trade war. Really highly recommend reviewing that. That was done in partnership with Oxford Economics. And then I had a notice of motion here for council's consideration in reflecting on the local government Leadership Academy. One of the key themes that I heard from organizations across the province was council not having the opportunity or councils not having the opportunity to engage with the public outside of open houses. So typically, when people are upset and some of the ideas that folks had was engaging with their communities through their Main Street markets. And I thought, oh, that's such a great idea, except we don't have a Main Street market. We obviously have a market that occurs at the gallery. So I put a notice of motion there for your consideration to say, well, we actually have one in July. And if there are a few of us who might be interested, I had a conversation with Mr. Dewer to say, would it be totally out of left field to say, could we have our little town of Smithers tent and just gather with our community members very informally? Just so that they can see us and yeah, just see us more in person. So that's there. And last but not least, my learning and development fund I spent this fiscal or for my my four year term was on a leadership course from Thompson River University. And Mary Atro had asked me early on to say that she'd be interested in learning how that applies to our work. And I would just say it was one of the best leadership courses I have taken, and I learned a lot and was surprised at how applicable it was to the work that we do every single day. And I really found that it reinvigorated sort of how I approach my role as a counselor. I'll confess, I was starting to feel a little bit worn down, but through those lessons learned. Yeah, I just thought I would offer to to say that if folks were interested, I could do just a brief presentation on some of the key lessons I learned, and I provided some bullets there. So it's a bit of a long report to go around. So thank you for your patience, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Any questions for Council Patterson? All right, we've got it. Council Raven.
There we go. I managed to get a report printed off, and I put it in everyone's mailboxes. I hope they managed to get them.
I'm not sure anyone opened their mailboxes.
Okay.
Boxes, um, Council Raven, but we will later.
Okay, no, um, that sounds good. And then just with the way everything's going, I won't bother reading everything off due to the audio issues.
Thanks, Council Raven. Thanks for persevering. Alrighty, um, Counselor Ray.
Nothing to add at this time.
Thanks, Council Ray. There are the items behind my name. So the the table, the whatever it's called, I've lost it. The Standing Committee on Strategic Priorities list is there. And my report is there. I'm just going to make one note, and thank you, Council Ray, for pointing out the words that dropped off in my as I was trying to acknowledge the people who attended N C L G A. And I've got after Mr. Schroder, who was a paddler, paddler, a panelist presenter, and it's supposed to say Ms. McKinley. So I'm sorry, somehow that part didn't go there. So, yeah, it is nice to have staff attend as well. The learnings are different. And the hearing is different than I think for elected officials. So it's nice to have staff there who are kind of hearing those presentations in a different way. So my apologies, Ms. McKinley, for just having lost your name there. And the rest is there. If there's any questions, I just did want to note, I'm I'm sorry to miss on Thursday, the opening of the Skate Park Society, the effort that's gone in by the volunteers, but also wanted to acknowledge that there's been work done in-house here as well. It's been a long haul. I think I was first elected. So that's a long, it's a few years ago when there was discussion about the expanded skate park. And so during that time, absolutely, the volunteers and the donors in the community have been working, but so have people in-house volunteering on the committee and doing work to facilitate this. So thanks as well to our staff who participated, and I'm sure it's going to be a grand event. There's lots of action there and people on that site all the time. So very cool. Okay, so enough of that. If there's questions, we can come back to them later. And for now, I'm just going to flip over to eleven seven three. And that is the appointment of the deputy mayor for the next year. And there is a recommendation to appoint Counselor Ray as a deputy mayor, if someone's willing to make that motion. Yes, did I make a mistake?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor. Not necessary for a motion, council provides yourself the authority to make those appointments annually.
Thanks for getting how things work. Seeing Counsel Buchanan willing and Counsel Ray shaking his head made me nervous there for a second, but Counsel Ray was up on the process. So thanks to staff for preparing it and Counsel Ray for not really shaking your head. Okay, up to the staff reports. So fourteen one, the recommendation from Ms. Smith to appoint Kevin Welsh as a signing authority. He's not in the room, but woohoo. Thanks, Mr. Dewer, and the folks who have worked hard to bring on the Director of Finance. And let's just follow this recommendation and get the signing authority updated. Counsel Buchanan, Counsel Ray. And we won't read the whole recommendation because it is long. Counsel Ray.
I just wanted to point out to council that we do all have to sign again. Because I think I got lost one time previously. We didn't think we had to.
Thanks for the catch. Yeah, so everyone is going to have to come in and sign. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Fourteen two, the appointment of the financial officer. That will be Mr. Welsh. The recommendation is there. Counsel Buchanan, Counsel Ray. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, then fourteen three is the B C Transit Annual Operating Agreement with the recommendation. Someone can put it on the floor. Counsel Ray, Counsel Patterson, any discussion? Anything you wanted to add, Mr. George? You're good. Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atro. Just a question through to staff. So on page one oh four of two thirty three, the line item, both total operating costs and total costs, including local government share of lease fees in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six columns. I was just wondering if staff could comment on that significant increase in those two light items for those two consecutive years. Thank you.
Well, just before Mr. George answers, could you just give me the page number again? I got lost in them.
That's okay. A lot of numbers. Page one oh four of two thirty three.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, we can just see here from twenty twenty. Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Actually, Counsel Buchanan, did you want to speak first, or I was going to go to Mr. George? Mr. George.
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Counsel Patterson. The costs that you see before you represent the ongoing cost to provide those services. There's no new additional routes or anything like that that is included in the cost that we see there. Those will be included as part of the Transit Future Service Plan that we're currently currently doing for consideration. So that's just the the cost of of providing those routes that we were provided by B C Transit.
Go ahead, Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atro. So we don't have a breakdown, for example, of what I'll just round off the extra fifty thousand. Is it fuel? Is it staffing? Is it? We just don't have that level of detail. Is that correct?
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Counsel Patterson. We we don't have that level of detail. If council wishes, we can look and inquire. But for this report, that wasn't provided.
Counsel Buchanan.
Uh, just a quick question through to Mr. George. Is the village of Telkwa still a contributor to this service? For some reason, I thought they weren't, but
They are.
They are? Okay.
Yeah, there's a difference at the regional level on the the I'm going to forget the name, but the roots one sixty two sixty three. The intra-city or inter-inter-city, wrong word, the kind of Smithers to Burns Lake roots. Those roots that are managed through the Regional District, Counsel Ray.
That was what I was going to say.
All right. I'm just going back to the cost. I should remember this, but I don't. Going back to Counsel Patterson's question. So if we do want the extra details, we would be able to get them. I just can't recall as well. If the if that simply was just a cost, the new cost of doing business. Because Mr. George is quite right, there's not, there wasn't an expanded service. And it's just escaping my head to what the jump was. My my suspicion is that it's the additional cost of doing business, Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I'm I'm struggling to do the percentages in my head, but the revenue, I think, has jumped by about the same percentage. So perhaps they're expecting more para-transit users. So door to door.
Yeah, maybe we can just leave that. And I mean, if I I'm hoping folks are still okay to sign the agreement. And we just get the detail on cost back for information. We would have gone through it in the budget process, I think, but I just can't remember those details right now. Okay. Are folks okay to accept the agreement? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay, fourteen four, we yeah, Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much. I just regarding what I can sort of sense from this budget. It looks like because they are forecasting into the future for the for the increased costs that they're just averaging a little bit higher, whereas the twenty three twenty four, or sorry, twenty three twenty four and twenty four twenty five costs, those would be the actual costs of providing the service compared to the budgeted cost. So it's likely just budget higher than you will actually spend in case.
Thanks, Mr. Schroder. Okay, I am going back to fourteen four, the Princess Street Reconstruction. And that's what the updated rendering is for, Counsel Buchanan.
I was going to say I'd be happy to move the staff recommendation.
Great. Second, or Counsel Patterson, discussion? Counsel Ray.
I'm sorry, just I I see the render. Did the did the sidewalk portion flip over to the other side of the street, or did I miss that somewhere along the way?
Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Atro, to Counsel Ray. So the current sidewalk is on the south side of Princess Street, which is on the right-hand side in the rendering. And it was determined through the design process with the consultant that the multi-use pathway would better be suited on the north side of the project or of the street, and that's on the left-hand side in the rendering. So this was just to update council and the public that that's that's what was selected through the design process. And if if there were further details needed on that, I'd have to bring that back in a another staff report.
I'm just, I actually, when I see it on the picture, it actually looks like it makes more sense. It ties in with the playground, etc. Two questions. Are we going to leave the section, the fairly new section of sidewalk up by sixteenth on the south side? And the second question related is, is is this still going to take care of the drainage problems on the south side of of the street?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atro. I can answer both of those. So, yeah, just to expand on the move of the multi-use pathway to the north side, that was one of the primary reasons was for drainage is more challenging on the south side of the street, especially between thirteenth and sixteenth. And the plan is, because of that, is to remove the existing sidewalk because the boulevard at all needs to be re-sloped to fit the the new street construction with the curb and gutter and then shifting the the road over slightly to allow for that parking on the on the street. So that was so it is, yeah, unfortunately, that one section was updated about six or seven years ago. And but the rest of the sidewalk is much older, so.
Sorry, one more question, if I may. Just given that this is this is going to, two projects are going to link up through through the Fulton Avenue. Are there any plans or any concerns about the crossing of Main Street? If we're going to have, especially if we're going to have increased cycle traffic across there. Any plans to to kind of beef up the visibility of that crosswalk?
Mr. Allen.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Atro. Um, staff are looking at the rapid flashing beacons that we installed, they're solar powered at King and Second. We're considering those for the cycle sixteen connector project at sixteenth and Fulton. And yes, we are considering that at that same treatment at the crosswalk at Main Street and where King meets King. It's basically King Street, Main Street, and the Fulton Avenue multi-use pathway all meet at that location. So it's, yeah, it is a very, definitely expecting higher use at that in at that crosswalk. And that's something that we're we're definitely looking to install. And we can apply for grants for those installations. The one at King Street was we received, I think, twenty five percent funding from I C B C towards the cost of installing those. So.
Thanks. That's good to hear. I it's just, it's well signed, but at this time of year, it hasn't been painted yet, and it's kind of not super apparent that it's crosswalk.
Thanks, Council Ray. Council Buchanan.
No, thanks, Mayor Atro. I must confess, I'm quite excited to see this project move ahead. I actually walk Princess Street quite regularly, and the existing sidewalk is going to be some of the worst sidewalk in this entire town. It is. I think we had a letter from a resident who commented on what it was like to be in a wheelchair and go on that sidewalk. And they said it is impassable, and that is certainly the truth. So um, yeah, like I said, I'm excited to see this project move ahead, and I think it will be just a real improvement for Princess Street. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Buchanan. Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Atro. I just wanted to say that I also really like it actually being on the opposite or opposing side of the original proposal in that once we build a childcare center at the top of the street, just making it a lot safer for the children to make their way into town. And on the note of traffic safety, I will just note that I missed a comment for council in my report around traffic safety. So I'll just note that, if I may, for the end of our agenda. So thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Okay, um, good catch, Counsel Ray. I saw the rendering, and I didn't look that close. So it's good to know that it's changed. Just a question on drainage, the follow-up. So on the side where the sidewalk was with the or currently is the boulevard, and you commented on the drainage, will the boulevard then actually be smooth and walkable with decent drainage when it's completed? I mean, people walk on the boulevards too.
Uh, yes, that's the plan, Mayor Atro. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. I'm ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Alrighty. So to item sixteen one, so we had the public hearing. Third reading is where we're at. If someone would like to put third reading on the floor, please, Counsel Buchanan. Counsel Patterson, thank you. And so there were some questions raised at the beginning. And I I actually can't remember because I did get the questions answered from Mr. Allen. But if there were questions for clarity from staff, for staff, now is the time. Anyone has any questions, Counsel Ray?
Well, just the the point in the letter, I found the letter a little bit confusing. Just because it I I I thought it was sorry, I'm trying to find the right words. I was surprised that that would prevent somebody from using short-term rentals, but I also I'm surprised that somebody could just rent out a room without any facilities as well. So if staff could comment on that, and then there were the two things that former Counselor Renassi brought up as well with the R V park not being defined, and then the group home being allowed to name one.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Atro. I can start us off with the some, I guess background on the Morris letter that was received, part of the agenda. First of all, the both the planning and building inspection and business licensing staff have been in close contact with the with Mrs. Morris and with several others in the community that are facing similar I guess, challenges. The size request, just wanted to comment on that, that there's nothing in the B C building code or the our town building by law that speaks to any size restrictions for either secondary suites or the residential dwelling units for, I think it was referred to as granny suites or in-law suites. So at this point, staff are not recommending that council or the town consider a size-specific exemption, which was requested. And I, yeah, just backing up, I guess I wanted to just mention that the staff are definitely treating as much as possible treating all short-term rental operators and homeowners fairly. And I the same with the current bylaw regulations and with our proposed amendments as part of the bylaw nineteen eighty seven. It basically comes down to if the owner wants to have a short-term rental and install a kitchen with a sink and cabinets and wiring for a stove. It basically, it does create a self-contained dwelling unit at that point, and it just simply needs to follow the or comply with all the secondary suite requirements in the building code. There are provisions for the the residential dwelling units or housekeeping units, they're called, where you know, relatives or or others can stay overnight. It's like a bed and breakfast type of situation, and staff have clarified that in the amendments in nineteen eighty seven by law that bed and breakfast situations and the housekeeping units are not part of the secondary suite requirements. So that we've established that that difference. And I would like to say also that we do we have been working pretty successfully with most of the applications for the short-term rental business licenses. That that's the major step that all short-term rental operators that want to advertise on a platform like Airbnb. They must attain a municipal business license before they can successfully acquire the provincial license, and then they're able to continue to acquire the provincial license and then they're able to continue to advertise on their, on the platforms. Um, those dates have been extended and, uh, staff have been, uh, providing that information to the applicants. Trying to, trying to keep them up to speed on where the province is as well, along with what amendments the town is is in, is, uh, you know, changes we're making to the zoning bylaw to, to meet the town's, uh, requirements as well. Uh, it's kind of a fine line between, yes, promoting short-term rentals, we, we, we know they're important for tourism in the town or for uh, temporary workers, that type of thing, anything under thirty days is, uh, short-term rental. But at the same time, not to erode the long-term rental uh, stock in the town, that's, you know, that's, that's one of the main drivers for a lot of these, uh, amendments and and the, um, I guess, regulation changes both in our zoning bylaw and the business license bylaw is to, to not lose the fact that we're, we don't want to lose our, our long-term rental market as well. Yeah, I think that's all I had. I hope I answered your questions, but I'm open to more.
Just the, um, RV and?
Oh, okay, with, uh, Mr. Brenessi's questions, yes. So the, I, I was just thinking about the group home, uh, question and, uh, staff did research with other municipalities and it was very common to have group homes permitted in, um, both agricultural zones and rural residential zones. Um, we've made sure that a group home must be in a, uh, semi-detached dwelling or a single detached dwelling like a, a regular house, um, so it's not a, it's not seen as a, a business on a, uh, agricultural zone property or a res- residential zone property. Um, and I, and then I guess the other point was the, yeah, the intent of the agricultural zone is, is to, um, sort of relate to the agricultural land reserve, the ALR, and the only ALR lands that are it within the town boundaries are the, uh, archery grounds down by the Fall Fair. Fall, Fall Fair property and, uh, also along Rosenthal Road and then into uh, dollar flats. So that's our only ALR lands within the town. And, um, it would, staff did check that that is the intent in, in the agricultural land reserve as well, that any proposed group homes are not prohibited from ALR, but they do require ALC, the Agricultural Land Commission, uh, permission before a group home can be established. So likewise, uh, a group home would be, would requires a building permit for any town uh, zone property as well. And then on the, um, RV uh, recreational vehicle park versus campground, um, we've basically grouped RV park along with campground use in both the P one and the P two zones. Um, they have their own, uh, there's a campground section now in the zoning bylaw. And there are definitions for campground, but the intent was that RV use is only permitted in campgrounds, whether they be public or private. Uh, the reason was that for this was to pre- uh, prevent, uh, continued RV use in either on the streets or on private, uh, lots that, um, are basically, uh, they're, they're practicing or the use is, is year-round residential use. So we've limited RV use to only thirty days and and that can be on your private, uh, lot, but anything longer than that, I think that still might be, might need some tweaking, anything longer than thirty days, that the intent is that, that be, uh, only permitted in a campground. Final comment is, uh, staff would really strongly recommend adoption of the bylaw tonight. And we realize that there will still be, you know, we're, we're going through a lot of short-term rental and a lot of, uh, housing density uh, growing pains, um, between the province and, and, uh, adjusting municipal bylaws to, to, to meet the legislation. Um, so we do expect that there will be, uh, further, uh, recommended or amendments to the zoning bylaw. Uh, this really, this bylaw nineteen eighty-seven really captures a lot of the housekeeping uh, deficiencies and items and mapping items that we have experienced as staff over the last three years since the since we had the zoning bylaw rewrite in twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Uh, Council Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to make a comment, um, based on, uh, the public open hearing and comments made around uh, bylaws and by law enforcement. Having been on council, I guess, for a little over the three-year term, anytime I've had a conversation with a member of the community who had a concern related to a bylaw or, um, the need for a bylaw, my recommendation was always to reach out to staff through the formal process and ask that should they feel that they didn't get an adequate level of service to follow up with me? And I would just say during that time, the amount of requests I've got are, I can't obviously recall all of them. But I have never had a single person, when I followed up with them or they followed up with me, to say that they didn't feel that they got the adequate level of service from town staff, um, including by law enforcement, even when we, uh, only had one by law enforcement officer at that time. So I just want to say that I appreciate the work that staff continue to do, even with the limited services, um, that they have and the hundreds of bylaws that I assume exist. Um, so while I appreciate the comments that were made, I do continue to suggest that we have bylaws in place, uh, for just enforcement generally. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Anything else, Councilor Ray?
So, forgive me, this is something I've known about for a long time, but I'm not in the habit of going around and, and looking at bylaw. So, at the end of Riverside Drive, is that campground permitted? Is that, I, I can't find the, the zoning map.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Rachel. Yes, that is a P two zoned private property and private campground is permitted as a principal use.
Uh, and so how when they're being used as year-round residences, how are we able to control the safety aspect of that? Because I know on, uh, other parts of town, we've had people, um, shut down using an RV because they only have one exit, et cetera. So how, how are we able to enforce the safety issue, uh, down at the campground?
Mr. Allen?
I would, I guess I can only answer that, um, that if it's a, you know, zoning bylaw infraction, then staff would have the, uh, by law enforcement officers or community safety officers attend and serve notice. Um, but other than that, it, the safety aspects really revert to, uh, the RCMP because it is on private lands. So that they would be, they would have to, um, you know, contact the RCMP and, and, and make a complaint or start a file against those properties.
And thank you.
I hadn't actually thought of that, but there was something that became unclear for me in this last, um, questioning. So if what you referenced earlier, where one can only stay in an RV for up to thirty days in a campground, is that different when it's a private campground? Or is it still a thirty days that you're allowed to be in a RV?
Yeah, Mary Rachel, I, I wasn't able to confirm that before tonight, so that's, that, like I said earlier, that's one item. I think that we will still be needing to, you know, fine tune and may need to bring back further amendments.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks, Mr. Allen. I hadn't actually thought of that until the last querying. If there's no other questions, I think I am content to move forward. I think Mr. Allen's last comment is really it, that this is never a done deal. We never get to the end where we think things are perfect because the circumstances in the community could change tomorrow. And what we think is perfect today might just be a little bit, you know, something we want to tweak. So a lot of work. Housekeeping is such a simple term and it means a lot when we're doing housekeeping to a bylaw as big as this one. So thanks for all the effort. Um, I was able to get some time with Mr. Allen and then a little bit with Ms. Chandran today. Um, to get the perspective, particularly around the short-term rentals and, uh, supporting best practices. And Ms. Chandran said that there've been a lot of communication as well with other professionals, other planning professionals to find out what are the best practices right now. And it's a changing world throughout the province as well, so I'm, I'm quite satisfied, uh, with the amount of work that staff have put into this to try to come up with. What are the best practices in the circumstances that we're living in today? So thanks for that and thanks for answering the questions as they, uh, sort of made their way to me and then to you. And then just one thing for clarity though, because Mr. Allen, you said you urged to adopt, but we're only at three readings unless I've missed something in here.
Yes, sorry, we, adoption would be at the next regular meeting. Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. So then, then you look, we have third reading on the floor. Cool. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay, that was our big one. However, sixteen-two, report from Ms. Chandran um, on amendments to the subdivision servicing and development standards by law with recommendations, three parts, no. First and, for second and third reading, I haven't had that highlighted. Someone would like to put first reading, Councilor Bucama? Second or? Council Patterson, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Second reading. Councilor Bucama, Council Patterson, discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried and third reading. Councilor Bucama, thank you. Council Patterson, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. All right. Okay, moving through then to the eighteens, if there's anything, uh, that council wanted to discuss with eighteen-one or two? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move to nineteen-one, the supplemental, and that's, uh, the twenty-twenty-five sidewalk improvements award with the recommendation, Councilor Bucama, are you moving?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay, and a second or please? Council Ray, discussion? It's good news. We've got some work done sooner than sometimes we do. I'm not seeing any hands, all in favor. Any opposed? And that is carried. Okay. Oh, yes. It's like I almost called for German, Councilor, um, Patterson, we're just going back to your comment on your report.
Thank you so much. I hate when you call the meeting and then someone has one last comment, so I'll be quick. Um, when I was at NCLGA, I was able to talk to our ICBC rep, um, to inquire about, um, the speed watch program. When I had first moved to Smithers, I saw it quite frequently, especially in the high-traffic zones. Um, and I was a bit surprised to learn that the equipment had actually been sitting here for the last year and a half. Um, and the comment that was made is that, um, citizens on patrol had, uh, sort of stipulated that it wasn't a priority. Um, so I guess my question through to staff and perhaps the table is, um, do we defer to citizens on patrol in, uh, making those determinations? Or is it something that, uh, we would wish to talk about? Uh, so for example, on her way back through town, she was actually picking up the equipment and moving on uh, to the next municipality. Um, so I guess I was just a bit disappointed that we didn't even get the chance to, uh, talk about it. And I just want to say I deeply respect citizens on patrol and the work that they do for our community. Um, but I just wanted to have a conversation as council. Thank you.
I don't know the answer. Mr. Doer?
Sorry, just to clarify the question, um, you're wondering whether we as the Town of Smithers have capacity to determine where that equipment being the radars are kept or displayed, I guess?
And I apologize, Mr. Doer, my question wasn't that clear. I guess the, the initial question I had is does a committee hold the authority to make a decision on priorities, I guess, on behalf of council? Or would normally that come back to us for a conversation, um, before that determination would be made?
Mr. Schroder?
Thank you very much. And to your question, so unfortunately, um, Smithers Community on Patrol, S, S cop is actually a separate organization from the Town of Smithers. Um, so, you know, with their own separate board of directors, um, likely they were working with, uh, ICBC and, you know, had, uh, originally some, some positive plans to potentially do that. Um, staff may not have been fully aware. Though, you know, um, Mr. Mr. Doer or Mr. George may have additional comments on that time, just not too familiar with the file. Um, perhaps the best, uh, best, best pass pa- path forward is for us to, um, take away the concern, see if we can, uh, follow up with, um, so this committee on patrol and just, uh, talk about, uh, talk about that and, uh, generally understand what, uh, what happened with that speed watch program.
Thank you so much, and I'm not suggesting this is a priority. I, I recognize staff are incredibly busy. Um, I would just say one of the number one concerns that I have, being an avid walker, cyclist, daily commuter in my community, especially now being on maternity leave, walking around with Casey is just how shocked I am at the horrendous driving that occurs in our community. I, I hate to say it, but it is shocking to me. And I just thought, um, I don't want to add one more thing to our plate. Um, but I just want to at least continue to have the conversation to say, um, that I hope we keep it, um, alive at this table. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Mr. George?
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Councilor Patterson. When we have the information in front of you, we can provide it, uh, right away there. Um, just providing a little bit of, uh, background information, so, um, we, I was able to have a conversation um, with our citi- with our, um, community safety officers regarding the speed wa- speed watch sign. Um, and, um, you, you are correct that the speed watch sign is, um, no longer in the community, it's being used, um, out, outside of the community. Um, we had, um, a review of what it would look like if, um, if this was utilized um, in town and, um, there's quite a bit of, uh, capacity that would be needed and it was, um, it was identified that this would be best, um, monitored and implemented, um, through the Smithers, um, citizens on patrol. Now, I will note that there is an agreement, uh, between the town and the Smithers Citizens on Patrol, as Mr. Schroder mentioned, and the RCMP as three separate organizations. Uh, the town had applied for and was, uh, unfortunately unsuccessful in funding to, um, have a permanent speed watch sign in the community. Um, so we are, um, looking at, uh, future funding opportunities with our Town of Smithers grant writer, um, to see if a sign could be, um, obtained in the future, um, what that would look like and, um, uh, how it would be operated. Um, suggested by staff through citis- Smithers Citizens on Patrol. Hope that helps.
Thanks, Mr. George. All right. I think we're there again. Um, motion to adjourn, Councilor Bucama, Council Patterson. All right. All in favor? Thanks, Council Raven, for hanging in there with us and we'll see you next time.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
And even though we can't see, we'll just ask you to end the livestream.